Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you right now, Lord God, for this day, God. And Lord God, we thank you right now, Lord, for wisdom from on high, God. We pray for every lead, oh God, that you lead and guide them, oh God. And Lord, we pray right now for productivity in our city today. Lord, we thank you for a great day. We call it done and said, "It's so in Jesus' name." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Manzi?
Yeah.
Vice President Small?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Dave?
Here.
Councilmember Rich?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Stateman of all.
In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meeting Act and the Governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at Government Plaza. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comment by emailing the City Clerk at cityclerk@citymobile.org. Those comments will be acknowledged. They will be distributed to council members and included in the meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is live streaming and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. In the course of this particular meeting, all speakers will be granted three minutes to make and conclude their presentations. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that sixty seconds remains for all commentary. We ask that all persons who would present would abide by those rules. These are the rules of this particular meeting, and we are certainly appreciative of your continued interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of April 6.
On the low.
Second.
Publicly moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Minutes are approved.
Communications on the mayor.
Yeah, good morning, councillors. This is Jim Barber. I'll be making comments on behalf of the mayor. But we will be hosting multiple community cleanup events in April and May to coincide with the Alpows Don't Drop It in Alabama Spring Cleanup Campaign. The first event will take place on Saturday, April 17, from eight o'clock in the morning till 11:00 a.m. We'll stage at Baumhauer Randall Park at 1909 Duval Street. Cleanup supplies like litter grabbers, bags, gloves, and safety vests will be provided. On April 24th, we'll be hosting a community cleanup at Tricentennial Park on Lake Drive with Mobile Bait Keeper as part of the EPA's Trash-Free Water Grant. And finally, we will hold a third community cleanup on May 1st at Medal of Honor Park, 1711 Hillcrest Road. Also, beginning on Earth Day, April the 22nd, the City of Mobile will be distributing 1,000 litter grabbers along with safety vests and gloves at our recycling centers located on Museum Drive and Pine Hill Drive. And we want to encourage all citizens to get involved in the cleanup around their own homes and businesses. And citizens can also help make Mobile a cleaner place to live by picking up around their neighborhoods, planning their own cleanup event, or grabbing a friend and joining one of ours. One of the other things that has taken place on yesterday, April the 12th, City of Mobile employees did return back to work. And we had pretty large-scale compliance. We've had no complaints or problems so far with the return to work. We're still following guidelines as far as CDC guidelines and ADPH recommendations to keep our employees safe as well as citizens visiting our facilities. And Mr. President, that's all the comments that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Spell.
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, uh, to the Chief Barber. You said that the employees are back, and so does that to like the, I guess, like the permit office, business license. Is that open fully now or what?
Yes, sir. We instituted a return-to-work policy. And so you know, we began that process over a month ago by providing vaccination to those employees teleworking or remote working so that they could return to work safely. And that began yesterday. Now, there are still some precautions. I think they're still requiring appointment only that type to keep the crowds down in our lobbies. But we are return-to-work. We are not teleworking.
Okay, then. But it's not open for the business license permits? They say how to do that online?
It is. No, sir. We are taking appointments for people that don't have access to online capability to come on in and get those permits.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, we have Shonda Smith for the Parks Department, Employee of the Month.
Wonderful. Ms. Smith?
Oh, she's not here.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
We don't have an Employee of the Month, but we do have a new employee. Last week, we read a proclamation in honor of Maggie Steinberg, who left us. Today, we have the person who is the person of this, Cassandra Michaelboy. And I would like for the City Clerk to, if she's present, to present that to us so we can see our new employee. We are proud to have her onboard, looking forward to her during outstanding job because I have plenty of work for her to do.
Oh, great. Turn the thing towards her. Oh, she, oh. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Thank you. I'm happy to be on your team.
Outstanding, okay?
Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I move the adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second. Publicly moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Mr. President, Shonda Smith is now on.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to introduce the Employee of the Month?
Yes, I'm sorry. We have technical difficulties in the front. Give me one minute so I can get her back here in my office. I apologize.
Can we just go into the next presentation and come back to Ms. Smith?
Okay. Um, we have appeals. Uh, we have requests for wave-of-noise ordinance on May the 8th at Cooper Riverside Park, May the 8th on Cody Road North, April 17th on the 200th Block of Rappier Avenue, April 24th on Kanta Street.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Publicly moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.
I see Ms. Smith is back.
Ms. Smith.
Right, I think she's ready.
Yes, gotta go. Then it'll be your turn.
Good morning. I'm back and out of breath. I apologize. We have technical difficulties.
You're supposed to be at the front.
Ms. Small, thank you. I would like to present Employee of the Month this month to Ms. Jessica White. Ms. Jessica White is our front desk receptionist for the center, for the front office here. She was chosen by fifteen of her colleagues and peers. They said that she's outstanding. She's always willing to help. She's a pleasant face in the front. By default, she ends up touching every part of Parks and Recreation. She's our front desk of any complaints or calls that come in. She is the one who addresses that. So we are glad to offer her the Employee of the Month for the month of April. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Ms. White.
Uh, thank you to my colleagues that selected me for this award. Um, I have been representing, actually, the City of Mobile for about eight years now, starting with the Police Department and then eventually traveling here to Parks and Recreation, where I'm having just a great time every day at work.
Wonderful.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I would like to know what district Jessica lives in.
I'm actually District 3.
Yeah.
That's why she's so bright.
You can always move.
That's right. Keep up the great work, Ms. White. We are really proud of.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Public hearing today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 405 Calhoun Street, 53 South Georgia Avenue, 519 Patton Avenue, 1255 Persimmon Street, 307 Stocking Street, 2108 Buckner Place, 905, formerly known as 1009 Gale Street, 1365 Glenn Street.
Is there anyone here?
Mr. President, this is David with Municipal Enforcement. And if you have a moment, I do have additional information on 307 Stocking Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to start off with...
David?
Yes.
Before you start, should we let Mr. President open the public hearing first, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that would like to participate, offer any commentary during any of the public hearings or items called by City Clerk?
Okay.
Mr. Duffenbach?
Mr. Duffenbach?
Yes, and Mr. President, I just want to follow up with the structure. The total square footage, we, Municipal Enforcement is pegging right at 5,400 square feet. The original structure was right around 2,000 square feet with several additions. And again, this is a two-story, large structure, which puts the main structure with the additions right around 5,000 square feet. And there was a detached garage in the rear. So we're putting the, right around 5,200 square feet to 5,400 square feet of structures that was demolished. And I also want to point out that this is, this structure was located in the Linecoff Historic District, which our Historic Department, at the time Paige Lark, asked that we hold off on moving forward with the demolition so that they could explore options to save the main structure, not so much the additions that were the problem that we see from time and time again, that the additions on these structures are what's failing. What the goal was, was to save the main structure, demolish the accessory structures so that this historic home could have been preserved. But the problem we ran into is if we remember back in September, we were visited by Hurricane, Hurricane Sally. And Hurricane Sally came in and did some damage to this structure, causing the whole front of the portion of the columns to collapse and the front portion of the addition to collapse as well. So now we have a structure that has collapsed next to a residential structure to the south with about an eight-foot separation between the two structures. So the condition of the demolition changed to a, "We need to get this down now." But as you remember, a lot of the demolition contractors were engaged in cleanup efforts after the hurricane. So when we put out the bids in December, and yes, I understand, but we had a second hurricane that moved through, so causing more damage in our area, which our contractors were not all able to provide quotes, we did bid out on December 4th for the demolition of this structure, which the front portion collapsed. And that's why we have a higher price of the $14,995.
I appreciate the additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Duffenbach. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the course of any of these public hearings?
Um, Mr. President, we have Arthur Coffey regarding 1255 Persimmon Street.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Mr. Coffey.
I don't have a problem with paying the price on tearing down the property. My problem is that there's nothing to follow up to make sure that the people kind of cleaning the place up. And if they leave it trashing stuff there, that give other people incentive to dump trash on your property. I want them to clean my land up so I can cut it with my lawnmower because the city gonna be on me about keeping that property clean. And that's the problem I have.
Uh, is there any remarks to that, Mr. Duffenbach?
Yes, Mr. President. Our Municipal Enforcement, our final phase to a demolition project is the final inspection, the site inspection. And what we do is we make sure that all of the foundation, well, all the debris, the foundation, that it's raked clear and that the site is a clean site, one for future development, if that is the choice of the property owner, but also so that, yes, the grass can be maintained. And the photograph I have in my file shows a clean development site once we finish the demolition. At this point, I would say, and just remind everybody that the city does not own this property. What we're doing is we're just trying to recoup the cost of the demolition of the structure. The property owner has the ability to, at any time, to maintain the property when it comes to grass and as it grows.
I understand that part, but the other part I don't understand is how they can make holes, you know, dig holes on the property and then don't level the land back off and leave brick bats and all that. You can't cut your property with all that stuff on the property. And that's the only problem I have. I have no problem with paying the cost of them tearing the place down, but they leave it messed up so bad. Now, some places, people, they bring dirt and they fill in the holes and stuff in some property. But then other properties and other areas, they don't do that. They don't do a good enough job. I talked to the guy that was tearing the house down, and he told me that he would level the land off. After he had tore it down, I went and talked to him. And I talked to Ms. Davis, and she says that they was gonna make sure that they landscaped it, saying, you know, clean it out. But they didn't do it.
Mr. Coffey, if you'd like, we can follow up and make another site visit. But the file I have in front of me with the photograph on the final inspection shows a cleared, level site. But again, we can meet on site and address any concerns that you have if you believe that there's, the contractor did not do as what we required him to do.
Well, he didn't do what, I don't know about what y'all required, but I know he didn't do what he said. He told me he would take the bulldozer and land and clean it off. Like I say, he sit there and turn around with that tractor and dug holes in that hole water. And he ran over a lot of little tree branches and stuff, and it left them, the sticks and all that stuff out there while his tractor tow up. And he didn't clean all that up.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Maybe Mr. Duffenbach can show us a copy of the photo that he's looking so we all can see.
If you bear with me for just one second, I will try to get it on a camera and show the photograph that I have.
Okay.
I have no problem with paying. I'm ready to pay it today. If I get some kind of instruction, how I go by paying for them tearing it down. But I just want y'all to be aware of the people that's tearing them down. They don't do a good enough job of cleaning up. I'd encourage other people to dump trash on your property. And if they did a little better job of cleaning it up, then the owner can kind of keep it clean itself because the owner's gonna be responsible for keeping that place clean. The city gonna be on them about people dumping stuff on their property.
Regrettably, I'm having technical difficulties on my end. I won't be able to bring the photograph up.
Okay. All right.
Well, Mr. Coffey, Mr. Duffenbach has offered to meet you on site and to address any individual concerns you might have concerning the cleanup. And is that something that you would be interested in?
Talking to me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was saying that Mr. Duffenbach has offered for either him or someone associated with his staff to meet you at the property and to go over items that you might have concern over. Is that something you're interested in?
Yeah, I'll meet with him. He just give me a date or send me a letter, what, how he wanna... Okay. Uh, I got the information. I'll contact somebody and they can give me a time they want to meet me over there.
Okay, we got a picture coming up now.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a photograph here. This is the final site inspection photo, which the site appears to me to be graded and level.
Well, it's not level. And that dark part right there, that's the hole that's out there in that hole water and keep mosquitoes and all that other stuff in it.
Well, that's why it's gonna be important that you take Mr. Duffenbach up on his offer and you all meet out there and you can show him all of your grievances. And hopefully, you all can come to a resolution.
Okay, I'm, I can get somebody to come over and help me straighten the place up. But I just want y'all to be aware of how they leave different places in different areas. And we have enough people dumping stuff on people property, and that give them incentive to dump stuff if it ain't clean. But if you keep your place cut, grass cut and stuff, they won't dump stuff on it.
I totally agree with you. And we appreciate you coming down and bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, and that's the only reason I'm down here, just to bring you aware of that because I don't normally even be up this time of morning. But I come down here just to make y'all aware of they don't do a good a job in some areas. And Ms. Davis did tell me that she would be, take pictures and make sure that the place was clean when they got through because I was concerned about that. That's why I told her. And she told me that she would make sure that it was clean. And also, the guy that tore it down, I talked with him and told him that I would have to cut that grass and I got a lawnmower and I got a lot joined to it. And I just cut all of them, both of them at the same time. But you can't cover it all them brick bats and those sticks that he done ran over with that look with that tractor and left them on the property. So thank y'all anyway. And I know you're tired, but I don't, I don't even normally be up. I'm going back home to go to bed. But all right, we're all aware of what's going on in certain areas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We really appreciate your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak or offer anything relative to some information during these public hearings? Not from the end of the class.
Presenting the petition is another communication.
And I did hear a voice.
It's not your turn yet, right? Okay, it's not your turn.
I signed up to speak for the public hearing.
Um, oh, you did. I'm sorry, you sure did, for the Stocking Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hill?
Okay, thank you, Madison City Clerk, Mr. President. Everybody, good morning. I wanted to speak on the 307 Stocking Street. Um, I just wanted to know how are we tracking these communications between the city and the residents as it relates to these demolition and any other similar designations? We learned from the pre-council meeting that, like, how the contract wasn't even, you know, provided when this was presented. And we knew that there were some discrepancies on knowing about the property in itself. Is there, like, a miscommunication maybe between the city as well and the council as regards to how these prices are being determined? And I just want to kind of know the process between the specific department and the citizens so they can know. I think there should be some kind of way to prevent this. And then it's to, if the Blue Ribbon Commission is still functioning, how can that entity maybe prevent future inconveniences such as this?
Uh, Mr. Duffenbach?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm here.
Did you have any response to the inquiry from Mr. Hill?
Yes, just briefly, the communication with the city and the property owner is done multiple ways. One, we put a notice on the post of the structure. Then also, we file a list pendants with the probate court. Then we also send certified and first-class mailing to everyone based on our title report that has an interest in the property, notifying them of the action that, well, one, the problem of the structure, how to resolve the issue, who to contact. And then also, we, in that communication, we provide the hearing date for the public hearing to the city council. Whether they participate or not in the public hearing with the city council is completely up to the property owner or the party of interest. The council has a decision to make. And if they make the decision to go forward with the demolition, there's a 10-day appeal period for any party of interest can file an appeal. And that appeal would be heard in circuit court. We have some appeals, which some are successful and some are not. But we continue to move forward if the structure is not repaired to where it's structurally sound or safe. And that process then goes to our project manager within Municipal Enforcement, Gary Jackson, who oversees the process to send out requests for quotes to contractors. The lowest qualified bidder is selected. And then a contract is negotiated with the contractor, reviewed by the staff and subsequently signed by the mayor and executed by the mayor attested by the city clerk. Once that is done, we give a notice to proceed for the contractor to begin the demolition. Once we have our final inspection, then we come back again to city council, which we're here today with some of these notices for the fixed cost resolution so that the cost of the demolition and invoice can be sent to the property owner and/or if it's not paid, processing a lien to be attached to the property. But again, communication is always sought after with the property owners because it's not the city's intention to demolish the structure. We would rather see the property owner repair and have a viable structure that can be lived in to contribute to the city than what we're ending up with with these vacant lots. However, like we see with this 307 Stocking Street, due to some of the high winds we experienced in the September time range, the structure did fail, and it was at the point where it needed to be demolished.
Mr. Duffenbach, I was speaking particularly to how it's being tracked. We saw Mr. Coffey came on before, and what was on file was different than what he reported of his own experience. So I'm just trying to say that way that we're tracking this communication. And then how is that being related to the council? Because again, you know, we saw where a lot of this stuff was misunderstood, but it's on the agenda.
I'm not sure what you're referring to as in tracking. The Municipal Enforcement has a complete file. We track it from the beginning to end in our file. And any information that the city council needs to make a decision is always available. And we do provide information at the time of the public hearing to declare the structure a public nuisance. And again, at this point, we go forward and solicit bids from the lowest qualified contractor, and we move forward when the property owner does not.
Okay, so that would just basically be between the council member helping to prepare the agenda.
Again, I'm not sure what you're looking for. I don't know, other than what I've explained to you on tracking.
Okay, and is that available to the public?
Uh, you can. It's, there's a public, there's a way to get the copy of the records. It's a public records request, and it would be submitted through the Communications Department of the City of Mobile. the communications department of the city of Mobile. Once that application is is forwarded over to me, we'll be happy to make a copy of the file and forward it over to you.
Thank you so much, sir. And Mr. President, my other question was pertaining to the Blue Ribbon Commission.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Hill, that, uh this particular aspect of of housing hadn't has not been assigned to that Blue Ribbon Commission. Uh that that could change uh in the not so distant future and uh we'll certainly take that under advisement. Uh we haven't had an opportunity uh due to the pandemic to bring that commission in uh for any further meetings, we hope, uh as we return to some semblance of normalcy that we'll be able to do that in in the very near future. And so that may be a part of the task uh that we would assign to them. But at this point, it's not in the scope of of what they would be analyzing. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Presentation of petitions and other communication, presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, uh Gary Miller. Um I don't know that Mr. Miller is um
He said he's gonna come down.
Joining us. Okay, he he did not, he did not show. Um he may be satisfied having talked to uh Mr. Amberger. Um Reggie Hill and Reggie Hill is um addressing zero eight two five two forty two eight zero and twenty one two five eight.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave?
I object to giving Mr. Hill another bite at the apple. That that that, what we heard from him just a minute ago was not a comment on three oh seven Stocking Street. It was a series of questions about how the ha- city handles blighted properties. So that should have been taken up in uh in his presentation to and petitions to other communications to the council. If if we allow this, if we allow him and others to go in and chime in on the public hearings about issues that aren't related to the specific issue on the public hearing, then we're giving, then we're giving everybody two chances to speak to the council on general matters and not just one.
I I I don't disagree with your assessment, uh Mr. Dave. Uh Mr. Hill was was called upon by the city clerk. He signed in uh in order to offer commentary on uh three oh seven Stocking Street and he subsequently signed in to uh speak uh concerning agenda items. And so uh, Mr. Hill, we're we're gonna ask that if you could make certain that your uh future commentary is uh germane and pertinent to the items that you signed up for uh so that we don't run into this kind of issue again. We we're willing to listen. Uh and if you could keep your commentary pertinent to the items that you signed in for, it would really be helpful.
Was that a part of my time?
No.
No, she didn't start yet.
I would thank you, Madam City Clerk, uh Mr. President, members of the council, uh Mr. Mayor, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Uh good morning again. Excuse me, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. Um as usual, I will always be um on topic and in relation to what I've signed up for. As our council rules address, there's opportunity to sign up before the meeting, whether that's the day before or
Mr. Hill.
Previous week or dealing with excuse me, sir, this is my time, Mr. President.
I I I understand it's your time, but all all I'm asking, if you, I I just was asking and and we're trying to show some deference because you did sign in. But if you could keep your commentary pertinent to the items that you listed with the city clerk that were of concern to.
Demolition is related to blight, sir. I believe that is directly concerned with what I signed up to speak on.
Specific agenda items and if you could go down that list of the agenda items that you signed in for, it would really be helpful.
Well, as usual, as I've been doing since twenty sixteen, of course, I would do that, Mr. President. Before I begin, I do want to uh take this time to thank the uh Parks and Recs Department, uh particularly the and uh
Wait a minute.
Hey, Mr. President, if he can't do it, one more try. This ain't baseball. Now, Reggie, I've been more than fair to you. You are taking advantage of what you believe to be a brilliant angle. And if we cannot come to an agreement, then we could just simply say that your time is up. You have a choice now to to listen to what you've been asked to do or uh we'll just, you know, ask you to step away.
Respectfully, Mr. Rules Committee Chairman, is there something that you all have read that I may not know about all the things that I'm saying?
Mr. President.
What I signed up for.
Let let's, let's do that, Madam City Clerk. Uh we're gonna keep an orderly meeting. I I have tried my absolute best.
Without allowing the people to speak in this order?
Well, we want you to speak on what you signed in for. We we don't want the prelude and the postlude. We we want you to sign in and speak relative to the items that you asked to speak concern. Uh Madam City Clerk.
If there's such an issue, I I have to sign up on Thursday, so then I can
Mute that mic.
Let's, let's move forward, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, essential COVID items held over. Forty zero one three, declare the structure at twenty six seventy two. Hayless Street a public nuisance and order it demolished. Zero one two four eight, authorize agreement with Barry Dunn, McNeil and Parker for cost service analysis and fee study Parks Department. Zero eight two four nine, approve purchase order with Wilson Distance for zero turn stand on blowers. Zero eight two five zero, approve purchase order to CDW Government for Government LLC for annual subscription to Soho Manage Engine Network Enterprise Management Software. Zero eight two five one, approve item based beer for Swimpool Chemicals. Zero eight two five two, approve purchase order to AutoNation Ford Mobile for crap, uh crew cab pickup. Zero eight two five three, approve purchase order to Petroleum Traders Corporation for fuel for the wave transit. Twenty one two five four, authorized contract with Black Van Russell, Russell Electric for Fire Training Center Welding Shop Service. Twenty one two five five, authorized contract with Johnson Controls for artillery repairs at the Mobile Civic Center. Twenty one two five six, authorized contract with Alter Point in support of the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Grant. Twenty one two five seven, authorized contract with Sunrise Network Solutions for security camera upgrades at the Arthur Outlaw Mobile Convention Center. Twenty one two five eight, authorized master services and purchasing agreement with Axion um enterprises for the purchase of body cameras, tasers and data storage. Sixty two six two, approve settlement agreement and release of claim.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay.
It's been probably moved and said, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. On the contract that deals with on analysis for our parks and recreation and fee for services, um I'm looking forward to seeing that uh move forward. But uh we also had a very big community push prior to COVID about our parks and recreation with an outside firm. Um I'm sure the council remembers, although it is a while ago. And I look forward to getting that report. Uh it's lengthy, but hopefully we can get it at a PF, uh you know, a a JEG file and get it out to our um citizens for them to review all the information because it was quite an elaborate study and they went all over the city, if you recall. And we had evening meetings and people did charrettes and again, it had, it was targeting the use of our facilities and recreational services and it would be something good for the city um citizens to review as well. So I look forward to getting that from Parks and Recreation. And um I know I'm gonna link it out um as soon as I get it in my newsletter and perhaps the council members would do the same for the community's review. Thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hold.
Aye.
Essential COVID items been introduced for the first time, zero three two six five through zero nine two eight five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave?
I move for immediate consideration of items zero three two sixty five, thirty one two seventy four, two seventy five, forty two seventy six, two seventy seven, two seventy eight, two seventy nine, two eighty, two eighty one, two eighty two and two eighty three and sixty two eighty four. The remainder to hold over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second. Been probably moved and said, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold.
Zero three two six five, we appoint Monica Motley to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Thirty one two seven four, authorized grant application to the U.S. Small Business Administration for the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant, Sanger Theater. Thirty seven two seven five, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer on off license for Ohana Poke on Chillingwood Road South. Forty two seven six, two seven seven, two seven eight, two seven nine, two eighty, two eighty one, two eighty two and two eighty three on fixing the cost for demolition of structures at four oh five Calhoun Street, fifty three South Georgia Avenue, five nineteen Patton Avenue, twelve fifty five for Simmons Street, three oh seven Stocking Street, twenty one oh eight Bucker Place, uh ten oh nine Gale Street and thirteen sixty five Glenn Street. Sixty two eight four, approval award a special bonus to the Parks and Recreation and po- Employee of the Month for April, um Jessica White.
Don't move.
Second.
It probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold.
Announcement.
Ms. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. Um just like to announce um our return to city council meetings in Government Plaza. It's my understanding that's to be April twenty seventh. Um and I'm looking forward to um actually physically being with everyone again. Um I think it's a step in the right direction. Mass, of course, are your choice, according to the governor and I echo those sentiments. I I know the medical community still has concerns about the stress and the amount of COVID, but um I really think it's an individual thing right now. So uh again, I'm looking forward to that and and think that it's good that the community knows we'll be meeting at Government Plaza. It changes a lot of the dynamics for citizens to be in person and I look forward to that. So um that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Mr. Richardson.
Uh yes, uh Mr. President, I would just like to say that uh basketball has returned to the city. Uh Sage Park is fully engaged. Uh passed by there last night and court was full of people and uh they were out there playing ball. So um citizens been bugging me for months about basketball. And finally, um the Recreation Department put the goals back up to allow the kids to come back and play. So uh for all who don't know, uh basketball uh is open. Uh not only at Sage Park, but all at the park with basketball goals. Um basketball is open. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Vice President.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. And speaking of the uh COVID um nineteen, um advising everyone to uh pretty much to go and get the shot. Have a friend of mine on yesterday contacted me and she had took both of her shots um about two months ago. And um this weekend, she was diagnosed with COVID after having both shots. So I do encourage everyone to please still follow, you know, CDC recommendations and, you know, pretty much just, you know, continue to wear your mask and pretty much stay six feet apart. Again, you know, uh her symptoms are bad, you know, and and again, she did have both shots. So just still have some concerns with the uh COVID. It's still, it is still present in our community. It's not dead at all. Um and again, I see it weekly uh within my occupation. But again, just encouraging everyone to please, you know, get vaccinated. And speaking of vaccination, on this coming Thursday, April fifteenth, uh from one P M uh to four P M, uh USA Health, along with the City of Mobile and the Riverside Baptist Church will be hosting a drive through uh clinic, which will be held at the Riverside Baptist Church located at thirty one thirty Dolphin Island Parkway. And again, this is uh for all the, you know, citizens, um especially in the South D I P area, District Three, uh to come out this coming Thursday. If you have not been fascinated, you know, please, please consider coming out this coming Thursday from one P M to four P M. And um the question is, who can be vaccinated? Uh anyone over the age of sixteen can be vaccinated. Anyone from over the age of sixteen. And again, by all the citizens in District Three and especially ones in South D I P area, this is your part of the town. Please take advantage of this opportunity that the uh City of Mobile, along with USA Health, is coming to our neighborhood to vaccinate people who have not been vaccinated. Again, this will be this coming Thursday from one P M until four P M at the Riverside Baptist Church located at thirty one thirty Dolphin Island Parkway. On next month, um maybe fifteen, which will be a Saturday, uh we will be hosting a uh a uh great uh Mayesville Community Cleanup. Uh more details are forthcoming. Uh was also, we'll be seeking volunteers on maybe fifteen uh to come out that morning to help to spruce up our neighborhood, understanding that the city. Uh this coming weekend, we'll be uh doing some cleanup in the Mayesville area. But on maybe fifteen, will be a more broader area that we'll be trying to focus on on the cleanup. And again, that will, the day is set for maybe fifteen. And again, looking for all, all volunteers to please contact me at two zero eight seven four four one or C J dot small at cityofmobile dot org. And as we heard in our pre conference um meeting, uh Ms. Smill um was talking about the uh senior centers opening up and everything and all. And and basically, the sales center on D I P has really had, went under a renovation, uh adding several classrooms for exercise, uh computers and et cetera. Um this had been something that the seniors, especially in the South D I P, had wanted for many, many years. And so right now, uh we're here where the building is ready to uh have official grand opening uh ribbon cutting ceremony soon. Hopefully next Tuesday, I will be able to go ahead and announce that date and time that we will be having the uh grand opening. This is a uh a great um event um that is going to happen because again, the seniors have been advocating for exercise rooms for many, many years. And uh we are now here. The rooms have uh is being completed last year and also the exercise equipment has been installed along with the computers, but because it's pandemic and the uh the state, you know, closed down the senior centers, the seniors was not able to meet inside of the building. They actually been going out to Tremere Park exercising uh Monday, Wednesdays and Friday around the track. But now, um we're looking forward to going inside of the building for seniors can exercise on the, you know, the equipment, the treadmills and et cetera. So that will be a great event. And looking forward next Tuesday announcing that date. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Jenna Gregory.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Um Mrs. Rich announced that we do plan to be back at Government Plaza on uh the last Tuesday of the month, on the twenty seventh, and we'll be putting out some information to the public so that everybody can plan ahead and for any specific protocols that we need to take, like, you know, distancing, that sort of thing. And um so uh our new P R person will be able to send out a release on that. So Cassandra, I know you're listening. That will be something that uh you will certainly uh be able to help us with. Uh just a few other things going on. Uh work is underway um on the pavilions at Langen Park. We are refurbishing those pavilions right now. Ten, uh five of them are being done. We're doing them in phases and when the first phase is done, then we'll go to the second phase. We didn't want to close them all down at once so that people could still go out and picnic and enjoy the facilities. Uh those, the ones that are being done now are closer to Ziegler. So uh once those are done again, we will just uh go to the backside and do the rest of them. Um Ziegler Boulevard is back open. It was closed for two different drainage projects that have to be done with this widening uh project that's going on, but Ziegler is back open and you can get into the park easily now. Um April twenty fourth, we have a community uh vaccine event scheduled for Saint John's United Methodist April 24, we have a community vaccine event scheduled for St. John's United Methodist Church. That is a Saturday, and it will run from 8 until noon. And as you heard Councilman Small say, the ages are 16 and above. Come on out, first come, first served. It's a drive-through, so come on, take advantage of this event being sponsored by the city and USA Medical. So we hope everyone will take advantage of that. And I think that is it for me. Oh, and one other thing, we mentioned last week that there was going to be a cleanup by the Carriage Woods Mobile Community Improvement Group, but of course, the weather was bad on Saturday. So that cleanup will be this Saturday instead. They're meeting at the cul-de-sac in Carriage Woods. There's a cul-de-sac at Carriage Woods Drive at 10 o'clock. So if you live in the neighborhood, or if you just want to come out and be a volunteer and help clean up neighborhoods, come on. We've got the litter grabbers vests and bags all ready and prepared. And I just thank the Carriage Woods residents for taking this on and helping she will clean up their neighborhood and make improvements. And that's all from District 7, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Jenna Gregory. Mr. Joel Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to remind everyone that two weeks from today, on April 27, at 1:00 p.m., we will have a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee, and that meeting will focus on two items. One is to get an update from the administration on the progress made in directing city contracts to economically and socially disadvantaged businesses over the last number of years. And then the second thing is to get an update on the, what kind of federal assistance we can expect to receive as a result of the coronavirus and what the rules are associated with spending that money. So that's two weeks from today at 1:00. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Mr. John Charles Williams.
No, thank you. I look forward to being downtown here very soon. And it's gonna be a great day in Mobile, Alabama, when that happens.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's keep all of those announcements in mind. We have a lot to be thankful and grateful for as a community. One of those things is the return to Government Plaza for this great legislative body. I want to state for the record unequivocally that I did not request that we leave Government Plaza, and I did not push us to return. We're a body of equals, and the majority was ready to come back, as we've asked employees to come back, and I certainly am in favor of that. And so I look forward to being back in our normal setting on August, I mean, on the 27th of April, and being able to have as high a level of transparency for our citizens and stakeholders as possible. As we return to our regular activities, hopefully we'll be in a posture to hold our community meetings, of course, with observing social distancing and masks as appropriate. We have three venues that are in need of of opening, of a grand opening. The new basketball court facility on Dr. Monica King Jr. Avenue. We have the new park at Lafayette and Congress that the Lafayette Heights community planned and organized and orchestrated. And then we have the walking trail there at Ladd Stadium. It's already getting some good use from citizens from across the community. And so I just would ask everyone to please consider getting your vaccines. Please let's be mindful and respectful of each other's personal spaces. We can see the light is burning bright. And each and every day, we're hearing, we're hearing better and better news. And in order to keep that going, we must remain vigilant, we must remain on guard, and realize that we haven't quite turned the corner yet. There are still individuals dying daily from this horrendous disease. Still individuals catching and contracting this horrendous disease. Let's keep each and every one of those persons whose families have been touched through death in our prayers, even through through illness. You you don't necessarily have to leave here to be impacted by COVID. It has so many ways of impacting even your ability to just think and and go about your normal daily activities. Appreciative of all of the leadership exhibited by all of our leaders in keeping the community informed and keeping us in a positive posture. That concludes my announcements. Do I hear most? Are there any other announcements?
Move to the adjourn?
Second.
And probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Polls?